Good evening, welcome to the February fourteenth Regulator Council meeting. My name is Boyd Langford, I'm the deputy mayor. The mayor says her apologies, she's unavailable this evening. We have an agenda before us. I know there are two additions to the agenda. Thirteen point two will be the elected official education program training. And fourteen four will be the community research program to the engagement. Does anybody else have anything to add?
Administration would also like to move fifteen point one, the correspondence for information, just to the committee of home meeting, there's a director's status report along with that letter.
All right. Anyone else with their additions, deletions? Someone prepared to move the agenda?
I'll move the agenda.
Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carrie. Corporal Barber. Welcome to the meeting.
So my name is Corporal Jason Barber. I'm calling in for Mike this week. He's back in the days, Sergeant Mike Burns. So what about the December report and the January report? So we'll read the first December one first.
Certainly. What does it, has everyone read it?
Do you want to read it or have you reviewed it?
I'm sure everyone's read it unless there's questions for you or if there's anything specific that you would like to bring to council's attention.
Okay. Yeah, we had Staff Sergeant Delaron, Dennis Delaron retired in December, so we've got a new post for a new Staff Sergeant coming up. And I don't know who that is in a few months. And Sergeant Mike Burns will be acting Staff Sergeant for the council.
I would ask you to pass on our congratulations to Sergeant Burns. We have correspondents here from, I think it's Deputy Commissioner Lebaki. I refer to him as our chief employee, so congratulations on the promotion.
Well, better not.
Does anyone have any questions for Corporal Barber? All right, I think it seems that things are on track about the same as last year, so maybe an indication things are getting back to normal? Are you guys seeing that in the community?
Yeah, it was fairly quiet, December and January, just with cold weather, I think.
All right.
We'll see if things pick up in the summer.
Well, perfect.
I do though, I was, it was a rumor, but I would just, was there a shooting here not long ago?
End of January, twenty fourth, I believe, six in the morning. Seems to be drug related, we don't know if any, if the person even knew the person that was shot. Just in the wrong place, wrong time, I think, so still under investigation.
All right, thank you. Got anything else? All right, well, thanks for coming up, or coming over. We appreciate getting the, the regular reports from you guys, so keep up the work.
Great, thanks.
Have a great evening.
Have a good night.
Thanks. We have the minutes from the January twenty fourth Regulator Council meeting. Any errors, omissions, corrections? Someone prepared to move the minutes? Counselor Jessman, all in favor? Carrie. Someone prepared to move the written or CMP quarterly statistics for information?
I'll move that for information.
All right, Counselor Dwyer, all in favor? Carrie, I don't believe we have the mayor's report. So we'll jump into the council committee reports. I can advise, January the twenty fifth, I attended the Northern Corridor Policy Roundtable. That's the item that's been added to the agenda for an update on community engagement. On January thirty first, they did follow up and I had a further conversation with them regarding that. Sorry, that was on February first, on January thirty first. We had the roundtable for the strategic planning. February second, along with the mayor, attended the regular Deneetah Town High Level Working Group meeting. We also had a meeting later in the day with Minister Glubish regarding broadband. He didn't really have a lot to update other than saying couldn't be saying anything until the provincial budget comes out in a couple of weeks. On February the fourth, I attended a session put on through the assessment review board process. It was a presentation on quasi judicial board roles and it was put on by Court of Queens Ben's Justice Mullen. On February ninth, we had a board meeting for the McKenzie Regional Waste Management Commission. Passed our interim budget for 2022, perhaps a little bit late, but it's, the work there is ongoing. And on February tenth, attended the Brownlee Fryup Emerging Trends in Municipal Law update. And I printed off their PowerPoint presentation. I'll pass it into administration and I'm sure they'll send it out with our next meeting. The primary interest to a lot of people were the COVID-19 middle considerations and updates, and we're going to be talking about that in camera in any event. And that's it, any questions? No, Counselor Anderson?
January twenty sixth, attended the High Level Library Board meeting. January thirty first, the strategic planning roundtable, which I thought went very well. And February second, Golden Range Society meeting.
Any questions? Counselor Dwyer?
Okay, so on January twenty sixth, I attended a library board meeting. So the library is actually going to be doing a trial run on Mondays from eleven to four. And actually, for today, it worked out really, really good. So on the thirty first, I attended the strategic plan meeting. February second, I also attended the virtual meeting with Minister Glubish. The ninth, I attended a McKenzie Regional Waste Management Board meeting. The tenth, I attended the Brownlee LLP seminar, which I found really, really interesting. A lot of good stuff about like taxes and things like that, and also, of course, the COVID discussion. And then today, myself and Counselor Lambert took a prospective physician that might be interested in moving to our community, so that would be Dr. Imad Bettr, Bettr and his wife Joy. And we took them out for a town, tour of the town and different, Robman to the arena, Robman to the library, and they seemed pretty interested. They're, they have two eleven-year-olds, so we brought them to the High Level Public School. And Mr. Dempster was very nice enough to give them a tour of the facility. So yeah, I think it worked out really well, so fingers crossed that they sign. So yeah, that's it for my report.
All right, any questions? Counselor Jessman?
January the thirty first, I attended the strap planning session that we had here. And then on the February the ninth, I attended our monthly High Level Policing Society meeting. And that's it for me.
Great, any questions? Counselor Lambert?
On the twenty, or sorry, the thirty, or sorry, the twenty fifth, oh no, that's a different date. Sorry about that. The thirty first of January, attended the strategic planning for the town. And then on the, on February third, I attended the E Charger webinar, which was very interesting. A lot of information there, so we'll be sure to discuss that. And then on January, sorry, February tenth, I also attended the municipal law course with Brownlee firm. Like you mentioned, really good information with the COVID-19 stuff and yeah, looking forward to discussing that. And that's all for the day.
Any questions? And Counselor Lebki?
On January twenty seventh, Community Futures finally got back together for a Zoom meeting. So we reviewed basically where we left off, it's been quite a while, but everything's running fine with Community Futures, still managing a lot of the government loans for COVID-related benefits for businesses. January thirty first, I attended here at the town office a in-person session with the High Level Native Friendship Center and their consultants. And the mayor and I were here, I think Counselor Lambert, you joined for the history walk?
Yes, I was.
Yeah, okay. So it was a, it was sort of a preliminary discussion on the joint project. Director Wolf was there too, like fantastic project with the Friendship Center developing their new park and the town's history walk over south of the museum and how this will all tie together into one, you know, one big, one big park. And it's, it's really exciting to see these kind of projects off and running. So I'm looking forward to seeing how that develops. On January thirty first, attended the strategic planning session with the town here. And February second, I was also in the Zoom with Minister Glubish on broadband. I'm not sure if we're just talking about it a lot, but I noticed, yeah, how critical it does seem to be getting, both in business and, and personal. So, you know, we are hopefully going to see some headway here for, for places like High Level. And on the ninth, I had a NWRFASD Board Governance Meeting. We're redoing our governance package, so it was pretty intense, long sessions. But it was in person and it was nice, it's nice to start getting back to in-person meetings. So that's all I have to report.
Great, any questions? Someone prepared to move those reports for information? Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carrie, ten point one, the council action list. Does anyone have any questions? I have one, perhaps Director Phillips. Have we had any updates on the status of the RSSA?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and Counsel. No, we did have a meeting on February third with our legal counsel regarding any review revisions for the Water Services Agreement. It was discussed about the RSSA for legal counsel to go back to the county to confirm the mapping issue that we had, to get some clarification. And I also, CAO McCaskill had the interim or the acting CAO Byron Peters called today. And McKenzie County is going back to their council to finalize any revisions. So as council and administration to each other, we could look at just getting a lot of the unresolved, I guess the unresolved items like the mapping. So I did bring it up to CAO Peters that we would like to confirm, if you can confirm with council, what sort of map we want to address in the draft. And they are on the same page that anything we can do with council and administration working together to push this forward. And so once CAO McCaskill comes back, we're going to set up another meeting with our legal counsel to look at possibly, hopefully getting this moving along faster. They did mention that they were reviewing the Water Services Agreement, the draft that was also supplied to them. And they were in, they were in agreeance that pushing through, not pushing through, but finalizing the RSSA, the Water Service Supply Agreement would be priority and then working on the Water Franchise Agreement and the annexation separately afterwards. So it seems like our administration, their administration and both councils seem to be on the same page, it's just a matter of the communication that's been, that's been had.
All right, thank you.
No finals or no finalizing yet.
All right, the check's in the mail, right?
Yeah, right.
Deputy Mayor, was there not a payment that was forthcoming, that was in their check run?
Yes, it was, it was supposed to be in their January, their first check run in January. We still have not received the payment. And I think that was more so Director Bad, Director of Finance, Mrs. Bat, she mentioned that it would be pending approval to release it. So it was her intention to, to just make up the difference of the million dollars once we sign the RSSA, but we still have not received the initial payment that was supposed to be in the mail.
But there's still some outstanding from?
One of twelve.
All of last year.
That, that was all of it for twenty, yes, for 2021.
And that's pending approval?
Pending approval to release those funds to us. It was in agreeance with the meeting that we did have with the acting CAO and their director that we thought that would be the best is just to follow the payment schedule with the old RSSA and then just pay the difference for the 2021 cost for the million dollars. But we still have not, we still have not received that.
All right. Any other questions? All right, someone prepared to move the action list as information?
I can move that.
Counselor Lebki, all in favor? Carrie, the upcoming events list. Any questions? I will remind everyone that there are lots of posters around town, Frostable. Community Services has done another great job again this year organizing this event. It starts tomorrow and runs through the twenty seventh this year. So come on out and enjoy some activities and some winter. I think we're having some hot chocolate and things this year, correct?
Yeah, it's going to follow a similar, like we did last year, but we're adding a few extra things. One of the things is it's longer, but we want to actually have anything ready. We're hoping for about Friday or so this week to have the ice slide ready. And, and events come all the way through from there. One of the new things we're doing this year is some adult entertainment. So there'll be an ice bar and that's sponsored by our, our tourism partners and specifically the flamingo. So it'll be a nice bar outside and an extra outside patio. And there'll be some different draws and that happening. And we figured because the families are going to want to see the bar too the following Sunday before the licensing actually opens up, we'll have free hot chocolate for the kids over there and draws. And there's some special things like mascots and that that'll be around. And you know, different prizes throughout the Frostable. So we're pretty, we're really excited about it this year.
Oh, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments on the upcoming events list?
Maybe one Deputy Mayor for the ice slide. Can we maybe ask them if they can extend the run at the bottom of the slide a little bit?
We're, we're doing it different this year. We, we had explained that there was some, 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 we didn't want quite a steep. So we're going to do a little bit different this year.
Perfect.
They're always open to change and making sure that we're really, really happy. So Ice and White is here already, they came today, so we'll start working tomorrow. And that's the first thing they're working on and absolutely, yes, they made them aware of some of the, some of the, I was going to say issues, but not, not really, it just depends. Some people like to rip it down there, so they liked it. But we're trying to make it more of a family, so we'll have a little bit, a little bit slower.
Perfect.
Any other questions? Someone prepared to move that for information?
I can move that.
Counselor Dwyer, all in favor? Carrie, the capital project update status. Any questions? No, someone prepared to move that for information? Counselor Jessman, all in favor? Carrie, the monthly report to council. Each department has gone through and presented their written update. Does anyone have any specific questions for any department? No? Good job on the report as always, thank you very much. Is someone prepared to move that for information? Counselor Lambert, all in favor? Carrie, thirteen point one, the licensed childcare after-school program. Director Wolf?
Well, good evening, Deputy Mayor and Counsel. We have had some discussions about license, our licensed after-school program and daycare within the town high level. We've looked at what we can do within our municipality. And one of the things we can do is extending our licensed after-school program so that we can eventually look at offering a before and after license program. And without, we can include busing, which would help a lot of the parents. Our rates would normally come back and be reflected in our, in our rate by law. But because this was an extension on service, I just wanted to make sure that council would be comfortable in the increase in rates. So we're looking at changing the after-school to a hundred seventy-five dollars and the before and after two hundred and fifty, to two, two hundred and fifty. And we are currently charging a hundred and twenty-five. And I should mention that when I had the FCSS administration run the numbers on this, we've actually been subsidizing this fairly heavy, particularly with the last couple of years. We're only opening twenty spots, we normally run thirty spots. So our fees right now, we would have to be charging closer to about a hundred and forty dollars to be covering our expenses. With twenty, it's even, twenty spots, it's even more. So, and these fees don't reflect what other license programs we had. We had the FCSS staff check the costs of licensed after-school programs across Alberta. And the closest we could find, they're running about four hundred to five hundred a month. So, so this is still quite a bit lower than other programs. So we feel that it's, it's reasonable, but it'll still be a change for the parents. There is some subsidy available. So for a program that has at least fifty hours, there is subsidy for families whose income is running that combined income, but it's either eighty or ninety thousand. So it's still, it's not going to help the higher wage earners, but there's still some subsidy available. So we feel this is reasonable.
So with the new, or the proposed fees, would it be a cost recovery program or would it still be subsidized by the town?
It would be a cost recovery program.
Any questions?
Was there, was there any feedback from the public at all on the rate changes?
Well, we sent, we sent just to the current people that are registered, whether they wanted the before and after, the extended program. And we got, we got some feedback. Of course, nobody's happy to have their rates increased, but there, there wasn't really, I would say, a huge amount of feedback. So it looks, it looks right now that it's mostly people are going to want the after-school program, but that's what we're running. So we haven't actually put that out to the public. So what we'd like to do is, is start this April first, so people that are currently registered and have their kids registered could maximize the program. And then after that, put out to the public and start in September for the before and after, to make sure that we're getting the current people looked after. So I think there might be a lot of other parents that have their children enrolled, perhaps at a, at a day home. We have one child that's your school and your other child might be a toddler. And this will perhaps open up some more spaces because then there would be another space opened if you could just put those children in our before and after. So we're helping to alleviate hopefully some of the, the stress on the lack of spaces in town by offering before and after.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Dwyer?
Would this fee also include the busing then, or would that be over and above?
Nope, it would include the busing.
So a significant portion of this is going to be taken to the school, isn't it?
Yes.
So the busing is just from the schools to, to the town office and then back again?
Yes.
So the parents would be responsible for picking their children up to school?
The parents would be responsible for picking their children up here.
So the busing would just come from the schools to here?
Right, or it, once it's before and after, then they would pick them up here. The parents would drop all their kids off here and the bus would take them to school. So if the parents were starting at like seven, seven-thirty and needed to have the before care, then they would drop their kids off and then at eight o'clock, the bus would come and pick the kids and take them to the school, so.
So are we going to have staff available at seven o'clock to look after the children?
Yes, yeah, we've calculated that in within this. We have some casual staff that would be able to cover the difference.
Any other questions or discussion? Someone prepared to make a recommendation?
I can make the recommendation for alternative number one.
Perfect. All in favor? Thirteen point two, the elected official education program training. This is something that I had asked administration to add on. As things are slowly getting back to normal, the province is starting up this program again, sort of timely for us in that there's a strategic planning session being offered March thirteenth and fourteenth. I had Ms. Beaton reach out, they are not offering this remotely, it's in-person only and it's in Edmonton. I would like to go, but obviously that involves travel and all of the rest and I will.
That is the EOEP program?
That is the EOEP. They're running two sessions. This is concurrent with the start of the RMA Spring Convention. They're also offering a second course at exactly the same time on service delivery. But again, they're not offering it remotely, it's in-person. It's two afternoon sessions, one Sunday and one Monday. Is anyone else interested in? Ms. Beaton was checking tentatively on whether there was room. She was running into some problems like this afternoon. Apparently the registration was trying to get you to register for the RMA conference as well as this. And I'm not looking to go to the RMA conference.
I'd be interested, but I'm just not sure on my schedule at this moment. If we could have a deadline, I guess, or I guess we would want to decide how many we were prepared to send down there.
Well, this is one of the seven courses in the elected officials' education program that they recommend all counselors do. So hopefully at some point, everyone's going to have an opportunity. The nice thing for us, obviously for the last two years, these have been offered via Zoom. They're typically not single session courses. The ones that I've done have been spread over four days for like an afternoon. But, and this is the only time this year that they anticipate that this course is going to be offered. And I just thought with our strategic planning process, a sort of timely.
Yeah, this is one I really wanted to take.
I, I would probably be interested, but I would have to check my availability as well, Deputy Mayor.
Sure. Is someone prepared to make a motion that anyone who's available to attend and who is beaten can enroll, is authorized to attend?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Counselor Jessman, all in favor? So I think just for timing purposes, if you are looking to attend, the sooner you let Ms. Beaton know, probably the better that it would be. Okay, fourteen point one, membership in the Alberta Association of Police Governance.
Deputy Mayor, the, this is in the package for the twenty, our 2022 Conference and AGM Program. Members of Town High Level who wish to attend this year's conference and AGM in St. Albert will have special, will, can register for this. Just need a motion for who is in attendance for the conference.
So what does council think? Certainly uncertain at this point whether the province is going to go in this direction. Certainly seems that this government is leaning that way. Whether they can have this all organized and in place before next year remains to be seen. But I think that this would be very important for the town going forward as our policing costs will change dramatically with the introduction of a provincial police force, if in fact that does happen. I know I would be interested in attending, is there anyone else? Part of the correspondence that we've received, it looks like Alberta and the municipalities, I guess we can call them that even though they're still AUMA, is, has had an interim board in place and thereafter the currently, an available Minister of Justice to indicate what the province's intentions and next steps are for actually convening a provincial board, whether that's going to be discussed or a topic of this. They have included an agenda. Not everything pertains to us, but again, I just think because of the potential budget impacting the future that this is important to sort of keep up to date on. Anyone else interested in, in attending?
I would like to attend.
Okay, Councilwoman Lambert, anyone else?
Which date is that?
I think it's.
I think it was 2019.
30th?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, they're going to have an open session here in High Level, I think on March 19th or something like this, so.
Anyone else?
I don't think so for me.
Someone prepared to move that Councilwoman Lambert and I attend this on behalf of the town?
I'll make the motion.
Councilwoman Guire, all in favor? Carried.
I'll get a tour of the Army Unit Portable medical station in our CP helicopter.
And I wasn't too keen on that part. So 14.2, the Alberta Health Services update on addiction of mental health staffing. Is there anything that council would like to respond to?
I find it kind of sad that they have as a resource urgent medical, mental health is the emergency department, when in fact we, the emergency department utilize addictions to mental health staff for that purpose. So really that's not providing any, any support.
I think it was clear from the meetings that we've had with them that, you know, they're aware of the problem, but there's not very much that they feel that they can, can do at this time. I think it was good that they reached out to Mr. McMahon, the school division. You know, hopefully there's a follow-up meeting scheduled for tomorrow, maybe something else will, will come out of that.
You said there is a follow-up meeting for tomorrow?
Um, with the school division.
Oh, with the school division.
Or at least that's what's set out here in their letter. Any other comments or someone want to move this for information?
I'll move for information.
Councilman Anderson, all in favor? Carried. 14.3, the 2021 federal census. So as you can see, it appears that they did a, I guess I can't say a better job than 2016. Maybe they're just our, our people that they thought at home this time around. It's a decrease of 70 people from the municipal census that we did less than four years ago. I know that they have said at this point that they're not prepared to entertain any municipal census numbers in terms of funding, but perhaps this issue could go to committee of the whole. My question was going to be, does council think it would be important for us to do a municipal census in any event? Just to see if it does compare with the federal census or not? So that in the future, when we're talking to a minister, we can say, hey, this is what it was in 2016, this is what it was in 2018 when we did our own, you did yours in 2021. Here we've done one less than a year later and your numbers were off by X. I recall the cost last time being around $25,000, give or take.
Oh, sorry, I can confirm that for us if the committee of whole, we want to bring that in.
Sure. Does someone think that that's, would be useful or do we just want to accept this as a very?
Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
It does seem like there's some glaring problems. I mean, our numbers may be okay, but for example, just in the totals chart, like is Garden River not in the Ready region?
Garden.
I rose that as well, yeah.
Yeah, Garden River would be in the, in the Ready region. Don't forget, all of this comes from Stats Canada, right?
Right.
Like none of this, this was provided to us by Ready and they gave us a bit of a summary, but all of these numbers come right from Census Canada.
Right, but does this mean that they forgot to put Garden River in this listing or did they actually not count it?
If I were to guess.
Is there only 73 people in Fort Fort Millian?
In the Hamlet itself? I, I don't know what the population would be. You know, there's a, there's a lot of.
Like 24, 24 dwellings in the Hamlet?
I believe Fort Fort Millian is included in Mackenzie County.
It is.
Whereas Fort Fort Millian here, I believe is a, is, might be so, North Tall Creek.
That is, that is North Tall Creek.
Well, the Tall Cree's are in here because they show the mapping later on.
Yeah, but that's their, that's 173B, that's their Fort Fort Millian.
Yeah, the, the mapping for that is the town site. So it, I, I mean if.
On the map, the 173B is, is the.
Oh, just that shaded section?
Yes.
That's just the town site.
Which is the urban reserve part.
Okay, sorry, I thought, I thought it was the whole thing because all of the other maps are just a, a border with the gray interior, so.
No, it would be the highlighted section in that case.
Okay, it just seems off and then, you know, and if you can, you know, sort of extrapolate accuracies from apparent inaccuracy.
Yeah, Garden River, I would imagine because it's on the National Park, maybe that was tied into Wood Buffalo area.
That's what I'd say.
Yeah. I, I don't know, it's, seems like it might be a little costly, but that, that information is.
We had one in 2018.
2018, and that was done by local individual who had done the previous Ready one back in about 2014, I think. And at least according to the mayor, is adamant that in that 2018 municipal census, that literally 100% of the population was captured. And, you know, given the individuals that were involved, can you say it was 100%, but probably, you know, 99% or something like that?
Those census people this time were pretty adamant.
Well, that's, they're supposed to be.
Yeah, more so than usual.
But you know what? Depending on who you believe, per capita funding is anywhere from $1,500 to $2,500 per individual. At $2,500 per individual, if there really were 400 people missed, that's a million dollars a year. Until the next census is done in five years.
So the $25,000 or so, what it may cost then, but, but whether or not we can even use that data?
That's what they're saying.
But again, it gives us a stronger argument because the argument that we've been using with the ministers over the last number of months since they announced that they're no longer going to accept municipal numbers has been that the 2016 census was so far off.
Right.
But now that we have the 2021, we're no longer in a position to say that.
I think part of the, 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 the power of doing that or, you know, suggesting your own numbers also was based on 70 other municipalities that were doing the same thing. So if, if we, is there any way we could maybe gauge who, who else might be unhappy with their numbers? And are we looking at, you know, maybe, you know, a large number of municipalities wanting to do their own again? Like, you know, that, that would.
I suspect that there, there may be, but.
Yeah.
Councilman Anderson?
I think this warrants further discussion at the committee of the whole. I don't think we can make that decision here, but at a committee of the whole to further discuss it. And maybe, maybe there'll be some of that information at that point. And maybe it doesn't have to be next week for the committee of the whole, but maybe we go.
To March.
To March.
Okay.
Is that your motion?
Whatever date that is for that committee of the whole meeting. That, that might give some of this, other these, some of these other communities or whatever may, may publicize saying that, you know, they're, they're looking at doing some of their own or don't trust the federal one or whatever, right?
No, I agree, it certainly warrants further discussion.
Yeah.
So that's your motion?
That's my motion.
Committee of the whole, any other questions or comments? Someone prepared to move that? Oh, you did, sorry. All in favor? Carried. 14.4, Canadian Northern Corridor Research Program, Community Engagement. So just so the residents know, a research group out of the University of Calgary, their School of Public Policy have undertaken a research program looking at trade corridors in Northern Canada. They have done some, I guess, focus group discussions to this point. And they're now looking to reach out and do some community engagements with a few communities within the province. High Level was selected as one of those groups, just given our proximity, certainly in the north, realizing that Edmonton really isn't the gateway. And they're looking to do a virtual community engagement session on March the 2nd from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. They are hopeful that any interested residents of the community will participate in this and give them some insight into, you know, what Northern Trade Corridor could mean for High Level in specific and for Northern Alberta and the entire northern region in general in terms of transportation, telecommunications, economic opportunities and all of the societal things that would go along with that. So again, on behalf of council, I would encourage anyone who is interested in that would certainly log in and participate. I would expect the, the details will be on the town's website and Facebook page. And this will be something that will be back on the agenda for our final regular council meeting in two weeks, on February 28th, to give you a sort of a two-day warning that this is, this is coming up. Because it's really important that they get local feedback so that when this is being presented to government and other agencies at the end of the day, it's got some meaningful input and purpose behind it. So that governments or private industry that are looking at developing some of these trade corridors really have a better understanding of what the needs and opportunities in a specific region are. And certainly we're all hopeful that something like that would happen in this region, which would have a significant impact on the local economy, population, all of those other things. Does anyone else want to say anything? So can I ask that we also table a list to correspondence for action on the February 28th meeting? Councilwoman Lambert, all in favor? Carried, then 15.1 is now 14.5, which is the HS Community Engagement. And is someone prepared to move that to the committee of the whole for next week, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. For the February 22nd, because of the Family Day holiday, it's on Tuesday.
I can make that motion.
Okay, Councilwoman Welke, all in favor? Carried. Is someone prepared to move what is now 15.1 through 15.7 for information? Councilwoman Lambert, all in favor? Carried. That brings us to the end of our public session. I would like to thank everyone for logging in to join us. As always, please check with the town's website or Facebook page for any community announcements or updates. And again, please come and attend with your family, enjoy the Frostable events over the next couple of weeks. Have a great evening.